So we have to sign our attendance. So requesting everyone to please get inside and let us settle down now ourselves. Okay, let us start with the word of prayer. Let us come together in prayer. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Almighty God, the Creator of heaven and earth, the Owner of our lives and the source of blessings, the God who really meets all our needs every day and who gives us His divine protection. We thank you, oh God, because we can always enjoy your blessings, especially this spiritual blessing, which is to learn something which is beneficial to each one of us as we relate to other people, oh God, and especially, Lord, as we continue to strengthen our relationship in our families, oh God. As we go on, we ask you to bless us with your divine wisdom, empower us, and we invoke your holy presence, Lord, to be with us. And you may hasten, oh God, the others, Lord, to catch up the lesson we have today. We interest in our time together in Jesus' mighty name. Amen, oh God. Okay, we are now in Lesson 14. Okay. Once again, the author said, "Everyone needs a house to live in, but a supportive family is what builds a home." Okay. Mag-unsaman ang mansion nga balay, no? Kung walay paghigugmaanay, di ba? Useless. Pero kung simple lang nga balay, 'yung naghigugmaanay, maunay, makahimo nga home. Dili lang kay house kung dili home kutsya. Hinumdumi, atong hinuduman nga walay hunted house nga bahay kubo. Ang hunted house tagkong balay. No nga nung na-hunted house man, tungod kay nindot lang, dakong nga balay, pero ay paghigugmaanay, maunang adunay crime na hitabo, diya sa sulod, maunang nahimong hunted house. Pero kung bisat bahay kubo lang imong balay, pero nahihigugmaanay, atinod nga home, ma-experience sa pag-isa, ogmamis kanunay sa matag membero sa family ang imong balay no matter kung bahay kubo or nasya. So maunay pinaka-importante. Now, our lessons today, nagae-ingon, the components of a happy family. The components. Components means substance or contents, no? Iyang sulod. Okay. So, unsaba ang mga components sa happy family? Of course, number one, the husband and wife are faithfully doing the marital duties. Okay, so pinaka-founder, no? Gusto tao malipayon nga pamilya? Then, ikaw, bana, ikaw asawa, himoon niyong doha ang inyuhang marital duties. So isa na sa tunggi panumpaan, tunggi kasalta, 'to mga ido-idona'to, no? So maunang ginatawag diha nga marital duties na'to, vows, no? Ang kanang vows na'to, automatic duty na'to nasya. According to Ephesians 5:22-25, unsaang marital duties? Number one, letter A, ang ginatawag nga wives sa consistent submission, no? Ang makano na yun nga pag-submitar sa asawa nga'to sa iyahang bana. Is it really, Juan? Is it really important? Yes. Okay. Maaka-isuunan, bantayan na'to karoon, no? Magbantay ta kay dunay mga bagong mga idoloheya o dagong mga konsepto nga usahay mo-contradict sa Bible, modify sa Bible, scripture. Hinuduman na'to, no? Ngang scripture, ang Bible, maoy mo supersin, no? Sa tanay nga mga prinsipyo nga nasstao. Okay. Sometimes mag-contradict, no? Kining konsepto sa God, di ba? Gender and development, kay usai total equality, bahay oglaki. Na-usai kung ato ng tumanon, morag dili na-required ang asawa nga musubmit siyang bana kay equal raman. That is defiance to the word of God, di ba? So ina-padenhe, if so happen, nga ang asawa is smarter than her husband and because of that, she has bigger salary than her husband, but the protocol for a happy family is still the same, submit to your husband, no? Ang isa ka asawa. Okay, to submit is a duty. A wife is to uphold a husband's leadership and authority over her. Kung ng imong bana, kanang weak personality, mutabang ka pag-uphold siyang leadership. Dili kay minos sa podimo, ako nalang. Dili na pwede. Dili siya pwede. Kanang may mga lalaking nga weak ang personality, no? Dili siya mga kaningon nga dominant. So ikaw asawa, imong i-uphold ang leadership si imong bana, no? Kan mo barog siya. Okay, so maunang himoon. Ikadoha, husbands' consistent love in action. So mauni ang duty po sa bana, consistent love in action. But ibasabot, let action speak louder than words, no? By the husbands. Usai ang mga husband rapod, ah, higugmat takag, higugma, pero di man makita sa buhat. Hinumdumi, ang gugma is abstract noun. Sa umanin eh, mong gugma, ogwala kay action, mo-abstract, amorag hangin rapod, wala, di ba? Pero kung himoon imong concrete through your action, ogma-feel sa asawa nga gilabs siya, ang resulta, damor siya maging submisib nimo. Paano maging submisib ang asawa nimo kung pwede ma-kitang imong paghigugmasaya ha, di ba? So mora siya ogre-ciprokal nga ginatawag nga situation. Okay, so both are commands from God. Husbands, let always show your love language. So kita nga mga husband, kinhalan atong kanunay ipakita nga atong love language. Unsa may atong love language mga husband? Unsa may imuhang ikaw bana karoon? Ani adinhe, unsa may imong love language si imong asawa? Kanang action bitaw si imong asawa nga para malipay siya, imuhang expression si imong love siya ha? Dapat naanas siya. Dili lang kay, "I love you." Humana na, wala na. Pwede pasagda na nimo siya, nagkaramaal na. Kasi lungguma, nagkaramaal na sa iyahang bulhaton. Ah, wala, wala ma-feel ang gugma diha. Di ba? So, ang atong love language, ang uban nga love language mauni, kanang, kuwan bitaw, kanang something nga ihatagnas siang asawa, kada ulit niya, dalas ya og pasulubong or flower and chocolate ba lugar, apertigun na, no? Pertikay na, kakuan, ka-effective, no? Sa asawa. Kung mahilig si anak, love language na sa bana. Unsa pa? Ang love language sa kuwan, ang love language sa bana usahay kanang ang buhat, ang bulhaton sa asawa iyang himoon. No? Kung dunay labuhon ang asawa, pwede wala na si trabaho, siya imo laba, no? Asi ako siya laba karoon kay kuwan kay mauni, kay na, si tabangan takka or ako lay laba. Kihimon nimo na kay love language nimo sa'ya ha? No? Unsa lay problema diha, ma-misunderstood ka sa silingan, "Andere da sayagun esya," o siya galabas siang asawa? Maunang itayo, kini atong pagkatsismus, so kitagpamantay sa uban, wa'ta kabaluon sa, no? Kung si tinod nga sitwasyon, iyaan ang kihimo kay love language ni anak. Libot pasabot nga andere da sayas ya. Love language ni anak. Okay. So atong mga love language diha, no? Atong ipakita ni siya or else imong gugma, no? Nagpabiling abstract. Dapat himo siyang concrete. Okay, let us see. Maritime responsibilities are being fulfilled. Okay. Unsa may ato ang kuwan, unsa ibot pasabot ni anak, no? Ang ato ang kuwan, ang ato ang mga vows. Atong hinuduman, kainudum pa mo unsa 'yung gisaad atong gikasal mo? Nagikasalta? Ah? Ako kanan ako'y kaslon, importante na mo iyong vows? Kanakawalingan 'yung vows. Malipay ko kung, "Nasa ano pastor, ama ayaw. Kainin dot guy lang na, kanang igikan si imo ha?" No? Ako namakoy vows, diya sa akong outline, pero wapo guy nang naas 'yung inyo ha? No? Bahalag morag corni na si diha pa. Basta kasi inyo hagikan. Nindot kayo siya. Bahalag taas. Kaya nga naman, vows ko na, saad ko na nimo. For the rest of your life, imo nang himoon para si imong spouse. So nindot kayo siya, di ba? So we keep refreshing the vows, no? At all times. Ganuman, ang una ra bang witness sa atong paghimo, pag saad na'to sa atong spouse, ang una nga witness, ang Ginoo. Ikadoha na lang ang ninong og ninang. So ang unang maningil, kundi na'to ma-fulfill, ang Ginoo. Maoy maningil ni ini. Okay. So, marital responsibilities are being fulfilled. So mauni, makapahimo nga happy family. No? Kung gituman gaya niyang gisaad. Dili pare sa kanta nga, "Gihimo mo ang saad, aron lang, pakla son." Okay, so kuwan, kanang, "Why polos, no? Ang saad." Unsa pa? Parental responsibilities are happily fulfilled. Okay. Dunay ginatawag nga marital duties na'to, o dunapoy parental responsibilities towards our children. Atong na-himo ang atong responsibility sa ato ang mga anak. Unsa may responsibilities ng mga anak? Kanalang pagpakkaon, pagpabisti, pagpaiskwila? Moro na. Dili, daghan kayo. Labi na sa espirituhan ng butang, no? Kita, ang gituluhan bagay na'tong anak sa pagkahadlox Ginoo. Ato bagay ang gida lang atong anak sa simbahan, matag domingo kay para matuluan siya dito? Responsibility na na. Kay ang Reproverbs 2:6, "Train up a child in the way he should go. When he is old, he will not depart from it." Atong lunes, di ako sa ubos, no? Kang sa MSWDO, sa Among E-Marpe, siya nag-share si Mam Juyday. Kay, ang ilang mga problema, no? Kanang mga, do'sa shelter ba? Kay gato mo ko dito sa veterans, no mga bata nga nagka-conflict sa balaoon. Pwede, dun na'to ilang dihusay, anak na grabe kay na problema ang anak ba, naabiyos patoon sa bato. So karoon, di pangutanan niya ang anak, iyang anak, di terbito Mam Juyday. "Juyday, when was the last time nga nanimba mo as family?" Nah, unsa ito ba sa bata? "So kad, sir, ida sa bata, morag eat years old. Wa't ako kahinumdum guyun, ma'am, nga, nag-nimba me as family? nga gida lang mini papa, ni mama nga ninimba me, wala, guyun ko kahinumdum. So kad, pagkapaita." Responsibility sa parents. Dili na ego nga makapaiskwila ka, makapabisti kasi mong anak, kanara, ang iyang kalag. So subok kay Pamalandongon, "When was the last time nga nanimba mo as family? Wa, John." No wonder. No wonder nga nahimong family, ang nahimong nga, adunay family trouble o niya na-broken family? Kay bankrupt ang spiritual aspect. You cannot put God out of the equation of your family or else you are really in trouble. Okay, the husband and wife are faithfully doing the marital duties. Second, the children are respectfully obeying their parents. Okay. Another component, no? Of a happy family, ang mga kabataan, respectfully obeying their parents. According to Ephesians 6:1-3, number one, consistently honor the father and the mother. So kita ang mga kabataan, kita nga mga minyo naghihapon, no? Kung lalapatay ginikanan, karoon, no? Ginamaintain ba na'to atong pag-respect o pag-obey sa ilaha? Pag-ginikanan? Or are you still concerned sa mga need? Bisanaan na kay family o procreation, your own family, ang iyong priority, pero dili ibot pasabot nga totally forget nimo imuhang concerns si mong ginikanan? Di ba? Papili guyun nasya. Or else? Maunang tingin, no? Katagang bitaw mga mga kuwan, di ba sa drama ato ang makita sa drama, no? Mga tele-series eh. Anak nga kuwan, "Why pakialam siya ang ginikanan nga buhi pa?" Karoon, pagkamatay may hilak-ilak, storyahe. Maunang panolthihon nga, "Why love your parents in death when you despise them in life?" Buhi pa sila, wakay pakialam, yo karoon, patay na, yo maghilak-ilak ka, morag ka, halos mo uban na lang, usulubunganan? Morag, nahilas na ba hi noon? So our responsibility, no? Sa ato ang parents, atong i-maintain o atong pag-respect nga la ilaha. Okay. Lovingly submit to father's discipline. So ang mga anak, kinhalan nga malipayon nga musubmitar sa disiplina sa ginikanan kung gikinahanglan. Ang discipline is kuwan, kining necessary kayo. Basically, sa panimalay, ang mo-implement ang parents. O niya, padulung tayo sa sosyidad, di ba? Kainudmo? Sa si Secretary Anyo, maoy Secretary sa DILG, unsa iyang gidrive, drive out? Discipline. O si Mam Jima during sa among meeting, "Pastor, can you make a module about discipline?" "Yes, ma'am." So mora tao donay 15 ka lessons ato about discipline. Ganuman, mauna ang pag-mold sa karakter sa bata diya sa family. O, ang caption ni President Marcos, no? Atong una nga kuwan, ni Ferdinand Marcos, unsa iyang caption sa una, kung naanamo atong tongora? Kainudmo? Atong kuwan na ba, atong nakabot na sa kuwan ni Marcos? Mga si Wintez. Kanunay, na'to madong kang sa radio sa una, no? Sa ikauunlad ng bayan, disiplina ang kailangan tinuod guyun, pagka-tinuod guyun. No? Kay kunway disiplina, hastang iagawa gayud sa kalibutan. Okay. Because discipline is the father's expression of true love. Ang pag-disiplina, maoy tinuod nga expression sa tinuod nga gugma sa amahan nga'to siyang anak. Kung ang anak, ako ng amahan, wala pagdisiplina siyang anak? Di mo bunal? Dili na tinuod nga nahigugmas siya. Iyahang inong gituluhan sa kanoutan. Kay pagnakuha na, ambot na lang. Nausahay, naay paghigugmas si ginikanan nga, wa't nagkanimao ba? Siyang paghigugmas siyang anak, dili na halos bunalan, "Ha, grabe niyo kayo, na-spoil na hi noon." Wala, ang imong paghigugma, maoy na-kawork sa imong anak. Pero kung disiplinahon mo siya sa gamay pa siya nga mamolda 'yung karakter, tinuod kang nahigugmas imong anak. Of course, mauna ng ninglutaw karoon ang mga vause-vousing ang mga kuwan balaoon kay, unsa mo po magginikanan ato sa una? Kapa magpuputos sila kagi ug mga child psychology magod. Masoko, unsa inaasaduol nga magunitan, maibunal, mabangkok, maliha, baduspor dos, maliha, di? Opo, gali po mayayon, di ba? Niya mora mo bunal, amorag bunal bitin, bitaw? Amoto nga, niabot po na siya. Pero ang essence sa discipline dapat dili mawala. Naagin nasya. So responsibility nasya. So, ang anak po, dapat mo submit sa disiplina sa ginikanan kay, aw dili niya ikasakit ang pag-disipline kanina si ginikanan kay mauna itinuod 'yung expression sa tinuod panggapaghigugma ng kanina. Okay, and then, letter B, enjoying the gift of long life. Kung ang isa ka bata, no submissive, submissive or respectfully nag-oobey si ang ginikanan, ma-enjoy niya ang taas nga kinabuhay. Okay. Good health and long life is a reward due to consistent obedience. In contrast, no? The Israelites, no? Kamang Israelites ba? Nung mga katawan si Ginoo, the Israelites died early. Why? They failed to enter the promised land due to disobedience. Ang uban nga, example ni ini, ang anak ni David, si Absalom, nga giban sagan og the most pretty boy in the Bible. Pero namatay sa iyang prime time. No? Kanang prime, prime si imong kinabuhay, no? Ang gigawas, atinuod 'yung imong beauty, imong pagagwapo, imong strength, imong wisdom, diha siya namatay. Kaya nga naman, nag-reveal di si iyahang papa. Guapo unta, pero namatay sa'yo. Useless, tungod sa wala pag-obey sa ginikanan. So, good health and long life is a reward ni ato mga obedient nga mga anak. Next, division of labor inside the house is happily practiced. So kung ang kuwan, ang mga bata, naghihatagan og assignment sa ilang mga ginikanan, diya sa sulod sa panimalay, no? Malipayon nga nagahimo ni ini, then, unsa kanak ang contribute sa malipayon nga pamilya. Okay. Ang mga anak mo karoon, morag tagkuhanal, tag-isa duha, di na namimpaasaysing assignment. Pero sa una kita nga daghang, kaya namigsoon, di ba dun na'tay mga assignment? O ang isa ganit, di mo tumansing assignment, no? Trouble, o niya? Ah, ang isa po, no? nga, ang iyang assignment imong gihimo kay laagan, pag-abot niya, imong awayon. Ako nalino na kahimo kay, iyang, ang iyang assignment magkabuo ug tubig. Mga tubig sa una, lagi ugdo ka ayop pasano nimo. Maunay ang assignment, ah, para ulalehig uli, kayong sa gilanganan? Pwede gabihin na, "Di, ikaw nga na dito, ikaw mo kabuo." Ah, lagot kay pag-abot niya, parul, makukangkag uli, ah, mag-inaway eh, di ba? Pero kung matag isa, gahimo siyang assignment at nindot kay, diya sa sulod sa family. No? Kanagitawa ka division of labor inside the family. Okay. Everyone is faithful to do his or her own assignments without murmuring or arguing. Makumadisi si Ginoo, di ba? Do all things without complaining and murmuring. Last, every member is keeping the atmosphere of love. Matag pamilya, membero sa pamilya, papa, mama, mga anak, no kinahanglan, i-maintain, i-keep niya ang atmosphere of love diya sa family. Like, sa command si Ginoo, loving one another, supporting one another, appreciating one another, and be always proud to one another. So what a happy family, no? Kung iyan ni ang may tabo. So, ang kanta nga, may masadyang panimalay, may masadyang panimalay, may masadyang panimalay, akong nibaluan, di ba? Sinanay og si tatay, si lalong og si iinday, silang tanan nakigugma ay sulod sa panimalay. Ah, tinuod guyun na, na kanta. Kung ang tanang membero sa family, modeled by husband and wife, niya mga anak mo obey, so what a happy family. O mauna ang ginatawag nga, magglorify ang Ginoo. Sa iyahang perspective, sa pag-stabilisara sa family, no? Magglorify siya. So hinaut, nga isa sa goal na'to, atong wala pa ngaminyo, diha, mga single pa, ma-stabilis mo siyang family, hinaut nga, isa sa inyong mga goals, no? Sa inyong family is to glorify God. Kay when we establish our family, it's all about God. Igo lang tanag tuman, dili kay kili atua. So hinaut nga, isa ni ini, kita atong i-glorify ang Ginoo, pinaagis atong family. So continue to be a faithful husband and a faithful wife. Continue to be a submissive wife to your husband and continue to be a loving husband, no? To your wife. And if you're a kuwan, children, then continue to obey your parents so that you will enjoy good health and long life on earth and your family, no? Mahimo siyang nga happy family. Okay, imong family nga happy, mahimo siyang lighthouse, no? Sa mga families sa palibot nga dunay mga struggle. Mahimo kang modelo. Okay? And God will be glorified. Maunay pinaka-goal na'to, stong kinabuhay nga magglorify ang Ginoo as our creator. Okay, let's pray. Thank you, oh God, for the lesson we have learned this morning about your perspective on your family. Salamat Ginoo kay, dili paulahi ang tanan. Kung dun namang kami mga failure, shortcomings sa among pamilya o kami mismo, Lord, dun na kami shortcomings sa paghimo sa among role as a husband or as a wife or as a children, Ginoo, then, Lord, tabangin kami ang makarecover. Isa kina Ginoo sa mga priorities nga dapat namang i-recover, oh God. Now that we realize that everything that we should do should always honor you, oh God. Hinaut nga, in my life, you will be glorified. In my marriage, you will be glorified. In my family, you will be glorified, oh God. And everything we do, you will be glorified. That is our goal, oh God. Bless us all and continue to give your wisdom upon your people, the legislators, oh God, who will be doing their session today. We pray that your divine wisdom will govern among them and they will come up a right decision concerning the continuous progress of the municipality of Ipin. Continue, oh bless also all the LGO family and all Ipininos. We bring you back with all the glory and honor in the name of our God the Father and of God the Son Jesus Christ and the Holy Spirit. Amen and amen. God bless and good morning.
Good morning. The seventy-second regular session of the Sangguneang Bayan of Ipil is now about to commence. May I request, uh, everyone to please rise for the entrance of the official maze of the Sangguneang Bayan of Ipil with our, uh, presiding officer, the Honorable Vice Mayor Ramso Troy DiOligario, and our acting, uh, Sangguneang Secretary, Ms. Sheila Vargas.
Hello. Good morning to each and everyone. The seventy-second regular session is hereby called to order. Okay, everybody, uh, he remains standing for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem.
Nakababayan ang pambansang awi ng Pilipinas.
Please be seated. Madam Secretary, for the roll call.
Mister Chair, before the roll call, a privilege motion.
Yes.
Uh, our Sangguneang Secretary is not around. She is in official business. Uh, may I move, Mister Chair, that the Chair would appoint Ms. Sheila Vargas as our temporary secretary for this regular session?
Okay, uh, the role, uh, Ms. Sheila Vargas now recognized to be our, uh, Sangguneang Secretary for today's, uh, regular session.
Welcome to the seventy-second regular session. Now, we are now in call. Honorable Ramses Troy DiOligario, Honorable Sheriff Mazin Hasin, Honorable Glenn Ian Way Sabion, Honorable Parita Edang Palan, Honorable Catherine M. Turalba,
Present.
Honorable Seraphin Al Ramos, Honorable Dayael Catalunya Sounlib, Honorable Unifredo Anchong, Honorable Juan Pablo A. Nueva, Honorable Taximeel Tiopalalon, and Honorable Lahapid Di Muhammad. Seven are present, Mister Chair.
Okay, considering that there are seven members present, the Chair would like to declare that they are saikaroon. Uh, Mister Floor, for the adoption of the order of business.
Mister Chair, we are, uh, six in this honorable hall. Uh, six Mister Chair, in the absence of our ABC President, uh, we are in quorum.
Okay, uh, correct, just kindly correct, uh, the number, Madam Secretary. Instead of seven, make it, uh, only six members present.
Mister Chair, at, at this, uh, juncture, may I move for the adoption of the order of business for today's regular session?
It is a motion for the adoption of the order of business. Any second to the motion. Julie Saren, that by honorable Hapid, Muhammad, uh, discussion, any amendments, objection, having now the motion here by approve.
Mister Chair, we are now on the visitors hour. Uh, we have here one visitor, Mister Chair, a former board member and the president of the Ipil Central Market Association, uh, in the person of, uh, Mister Joel P. Ebel. I move, Mister Chair, for the suspension of the rules to accommodate our visitor.
Okay, rule suspended to accommodate our visitor. Uh, Mister Joel Ebel, you're now recognized.
Thank you very much. Good morning to the honorable Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Rambo Oligario, our floor, acting floor leader, SB Turalba, our beautiful and handsome members of the Sanggunean, the secretary and staff.
Other, um, visitors are on, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Um, it's an honor to be here again this morning, and would like to extend our thanks to the Sangguneang Bayan of Ipil for giving us ample time. And, uh, we believe that ever since that we are doing, we are trying to, uh, move on as we experienced more than a year ago, nasunog ang atong mercado sa Ipil. However, amod dyan ang nabati nga, naadyan ang ato ang Sangguneang Bayan with the leadership of Vice Mayor Rambo, nga, nagsuporta dyan sa ato ang mga market vendors. Uh, we are happy again to inform you that with our management in the market, although nakalanrakas pa kayang atong mercado, but, um, amod dyan nga, napaningkamutan nga, uh, adun na'y mayong pagdala, no, sa ato ang mga market vendors. And that is why one of the activities that we did, even since last year, naghimugid taong kalingawan sa mercado, as one of the, um, kalingawan nga, ma, ma, kuwan apot ang atong mga nasunogan nga mga market vendors, malingaw rapot. So, again, for this year, we started our basketball tournament last, uh, sometimes, uh, October, first week of October, and we will be having our championship game for our basketball tournament this coming Friday. Uh, that would be December 8. We will start at five o'clock in the afternoon. And the, um, awarding will commensurate on the following day, December 9, at exactly six o'clock in the evening. So, at that time, amo lang giusa ang atong awarding with the Christmas party sa ato ang market vendors. And we are also happy to inform you that we, with our initiatives, uh, makahimo taong distribution of bugas sa ato ang mga nasunogan nga market vendors victims. So, salamat me, sa tanan nga, uh, nagextend of tabang, and wa, that's why we are also here. Kaya mga yud me, og dugang suporta ninyo, mga imig pinaskuhan ninyo, kaya Pasko namampot. Please extend part of your, part of your grateful, uh, heart nga mo extend of financial assistance sa atong mercado. Uh, we extend, o amo naipasalik sa inyo ha, makaabot ang inyo hang, inyo hang tabang dito sa ato ang Ipil Central Market Vendors Association. So, Mister Presiding Officer, thank you, thank you very much. Again, akong ihangyo, Pasko manron, mahanyo me, paranapot me, dugang ipanghatag bugas sa ato ang mga market vendors. So, akong ihangyo leput ang presidente with me, uh, Ms. Leonora, ang presidente sa vegetable section, nga muhatag sa kaning ato ang, ato ang, uh, solicitation. Okay, so salamat kayo, og pwidi lang punta, og pwidi, mahanyo lamiga. Kana amo landay ko onang, amo ang solicitation, ha? Kaya mura wala namon me time. So, bilan na lang, uh, naa sa inyo hang kasing-kasing, nga magkatabang sa ato ang taga-mercado. Okay, uh, Madam Floor Leader, Honorable Presiding Officer, and the rest of the honorable members of the Sanggunean. Thank you, thank you very much. Merry Christmas and advanced Happy New Year to each and everyone.
Thank you, uh, Mister Joel Ebel. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Mister Chair, may we be back to order?
Session be back to order.
Mister Chair,
Yes.
I move that Honorable Ian Sabion and Honorable Nueva be recognized.
The Honorable Sabion and the Honorable Nueva. Your presence is acknowledged and recognized.
Mister Chair, for consideration, uh, this council, uh, forgot to recite the, uh, creed, no, of which we agreed in our internal rules and procedure that every first Wednesday of the month, we will recite, uh, our creed.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Turalba?
I am a Vice Mayor and my covenant to my, and with, and my covenant with my people is to devote myself to public service. By divine providence and by the will of the people, I am mandated to preside over the local legislature. That with integrity and statemanship, I shall lead the local legislature to enact measures and ordinances for the common good and fulfill my people's aspirations for happiness, peace, and prosperity. May the Almighty God help me consecrate myself for the people I am focused.
The Council is great. I am a Philippine counselor, mandated by law to enact measures and ordinances that redound to the general welfare of my constituents in their pursuit for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in public service of myself as the guiding principle of my official acts. And as I head the pathways of local legislation, may the Almighty guide my mind and heart and shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people.
Thank you. Please be seated. Session be back to order.
Mister Chair, at this point, we are now on the privilege hour.
Okay, for those who'd like to avail of their privilege hour.
Is there any members of this honorable chamber who wants to avail the privilege hour? Be it collective or personal matter, just raise your hand so that you will be recognized by our Presiding Officer.
The Honorable Edang Palan, you're now recognized.
Uh, first of all, now, I just would like to beg your indulgence. Uh, if I'll just be, uh, delivering my privilege sitting. Um, good morning to everyone, to our Presiding Officer, to all my colleagues, and of course, to our visitors. Advanced Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Um, this is just a concern, my personal concern regarding this traffic situation of our municipality. As I have observed, morag, ang atong mga midstom, morag, they just concentrated on the pagpang, kaning pagpangdako sa atong mga, uh, motorista, og pag issue, og citation ticket. But instead, they forgot to look into the flow of the traffic, especially on the streets along, uh, Julis and Rabosa, uh, and some parts of the road here in the center of the municipality. And, uh, and adding to it, ang naitabuk kaga-hapon, diha sa, along the national highway, uh, sa pag-open sa Gaysano, and I can see kung dili na'to ni ma-address the earlier basig, magcost, judning, o massive traffic, no? And, uh, looking to it, ang mga, these passenger, mga tricycles, no, mga moto, uh, motor, motoc, motorcabs, basta na lang nagwait sila parking area diha. Uh, siguro, uh, I would address this concern to our Chairman on the traffic si Honorable Ian Sabion, and of course, sa ato ang mga midstom. Uh, the end, uh, the year 2023 is ending, so dapat siguro nga, naputay mahimo nga mga, mga policies nga regarding aning ato ang, uh, problema sa traffic di re sa Ipil. Naghangkaig mga concerned citizens nga, sige, nagbagulbul. Although, dili man na kinahanglan ang maminalang putag bagulbulang, kita mismo, kung maglibutsuruy ta sa, di re sa tuwa, sa lungsod sa Ipil, makita na'to ang situation, especially during, um, peak hours, no? During peak hours, early kaning mga seven to, uh, nine o'clock in the morning, and then four to six o'clock in the evening, kana dyan ang time nga, morag grabe kayo ang traffic di re sa ato. So, siguro, this is the time nga, we should be serious, no? We should be serious in our, sa atong mga katungdanan pod, nga, kantaon dyan na'to, nga, unsa'y atong pwedeng mahimo para sa kayuan sa atong lungsod.
Okay.
Ako gawori dyan ko, every day, nga, magsakay din ha. Ang mga tao, morag, morag wala na sila kabalo, especially these motorists. They do not follow traffic rules, dili na sila, I don't know, no? nga, kana ng nanay ga park sa pikas, mo park pa dyan sa pikas, then, napay muduga nga another park, magdouble park sila. Then seeing to it, nga halos one lane na lang ang mabilin. So, naku, unsa mani, then, So, naku, unsa mani, then, looking at the area, wak ma kuy makita, mas kinusa ka, wak kuy makita, mas kinusa ka mitsum, para unta nga mo, mo check, mo call sa attention sa mga motorista. So, ah, Honorable Chair, ah, I want to address this concern to the mitsum, and of course, to our Chairman and the traffic, Honorable Ian Sabiho, that is all, Honorable Chair.
Okay, I would like also to suggest that now, there are existing rules and ordinances with regards to our traffic code, ah, besides, no, um, dilin lang siguro sa ato ang committee chairs, ah, tran- transportation, but we should, we, we should also address this matter to our local chief executive. It's because, naanaman na sa implementation, kanang mga, ah, kanang ato ang mga lugar diha ang ginaparking, naanaman na 'yung mga balao, di na ano parking, especially national highways, we are being ordered, no, sa D L G for road clearing. So, siguro, iremind na to atong local chief executive, o atong mitsum, nga, ilan napo siguro na actionan? Kaya, dugay naman na ginakuha sa ato ang kaning road clearing, di ba? We've done this before, og siguro, na cleared na ma'to before, og karoon, wala namampod, gi- gibantayan, so, ah, namalik napod sila upang park, so, and then, one thing also, if we call the attention of the mitsum, ang ilang rason yudana is their underman. Ka may regyo kayo na atong tao sa mitsum, but considering nga, kadaghan po na atong job orders sa atong municipyo, but siguro, pinatamangyo atong local chief executive nga, iaugment niya ang ato ang personahe sa mitsum, considering the number sa ato ang mga job order, personnel, di re sa ato ang local government unit to be fit.
Mister Chair, can I speak?
Okay.
Ah, Mister, ah, sa, ako ang concern sa traffic, no? Which is, ah, mitsum si-
Point of order, Mister Chair, this is a privilege hour. If anyone would like to discuss that matter, let it be tackled on the other matters.
Thank you, Mister.
And in what form can this matter be lodged and can be reached to the office of the local chief executive? If the Honorable Dampalan is amenable to that, ah, suggestion?
Yes, I agree with it, Honorable Chair.
Mister Chair, I move that, that, ah, matter raised by the Honorable Dampalan, the, ah, discuss on the other matters.
Seconded motion. Yudis seconded, Honorable Sabiho, discussion, any objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Privilege motion, Mister Chair, the Honorable Chong is now present. May I, I move to relinquish this chair to him. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Catherine Toralba. Chair would like to recognize our regular, ah, Floor Leader, the Honorable Wendy Fredo Chong, good morning.
Good morning, Honorable Chamber. We're still on privilege hour. Is there anybody else who wishes to obey the privilege hour? Please raise your hand. Since there is none, Honorable Chair, I think we are through with the privilege hour.
Okay, may we proceed, Mister Floor Leader, with the reading of the minutes of the previous session?
Honorable Chair, I move to dispense the reading of the previous minutes of, of a regular session.
There's a motion for the, to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous session. Any seconded motion? Yudis seconded, Honorable Juan Pablo Nueva, discussion, any objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Honorable Chair, I also move for the approval of the previous minutes, the previous session.
There's a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous session. Any seconded motion? Yudis seconded, Honorable Nueva, discussion, any amendments, objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved. Madam Secretary for the Reference of Business.
Mister Chair, one minute recess?
Recess for a minute.
Okay.
Madam Secretary for the Reference of Business.
We proceed to the reference of the business first reading, item A, proposed ordinance, draft ordinance number 132, sponsored by Honorable Catherine M. Toralba, co-authored, Honorable Seraphine L. Ramos, Honorable Farida I. Dampalan, Honorable Wendy Fredo M. Chong, Honorable Al-Hafid I. Muhammad, and Honorable Teximal T. Palalon, and ordinance prescribing the rules of procedure governing investigations of administrative cases against barangay elective officials.
Mister Chair, we have the floor.
Ah, the Honorable Toralba.
I move for this ordinance, Mister Chair, prescribing, ah, prescribing the rules of procedure governing investigations of administrative cases against barangay elective officials. I submit in sum of, Mister Chair.
Seconded motion. Yudis seconded, Honorable, ah, Al-Hafid Muhammad and Honorable Nueva, discussion? Any amendments, objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Mister Chair, I move that, ah, this matter be calendared on the next regular session for further discussion and deliberation, Mister Chair.
Okay, seconded motion. Seconded by Honorable Palalon, discussion, any objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved. Let this be ordinance be calendared for second reading on the next regular session.
We proceed to other matters. A, supplemental budget number one for CY 2023, Obarangay Seklema.
Honorable Chair, I move that, I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Appropriations.
This matter be referred to Committee on Appropriations.
Item B, jury endorsed from the municipal mayor a copy of AMOWA to be entered into by, and between LGOEIP and Dole for the implementation of the government internship program, GIP.
What's the pressure of the body?
Honorable Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Rules and Ordinances.
Matter be referred to Committee on Rules and Ordinances.
We proceed to committee reports, Mister Chair.
Mister Floor, we are now in the period of committee report.
Is there anybody in this honorable chamber who has committee report? Please raise your hand.
Mister Chair, I have committee reports.
Honorable Toralba, you have the floor.
Mister Chair, committee report number, ah, 228 of the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization. The subject is the subdivision development permit of Ropisas Heartland Village located at Barangay Tawai, this municipality. The remarks and recommendations, the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization to which was referred the above stated subdivision development permit, refer this matter to the Municipal Planning and Development Office for proper review and evaluation. After the review and evaluation with, with careful study and deliberate consideration on the application for subdivision development permit of Ropisas Heartland Village located at Barangay Tawai, the Committee on Land Housing and, ah, Land Utilization find it proper having been complied with all the requirements set forth. I move for the adoption of this committee report, Mister Chair, of the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization.
There's a motion for the adoption of the said committee report. Seconded, Yudis seconded, Honorable Palalon and Honorable Chong, discussion, any objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Mister Chair, I move for a resolution approving the subdivision development permit of Ropisas Heartland Village located at Barangay Tawai, this municipality.
There's a motion for the approval of the said, ah, resolution.
Second, Honorable-
Yudis seconded, Honorable Chong, discussion, any amendments, objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Subject, a letter endorsed from the Office of Municipal Mayor, a letter from Attorney Socrates P. Villetan, CPA, the acting PPDO, and the, ah, Internal Audit Service Office, and the Provincial Development Council Secretary, requesting for an approved resolution to the conversion of local roads section, Ipir Circumferential Road into National Roads. Ah, the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization to which the above subject matter was referred for review. On October 5, 2022, the DPWH Secretary Manuel M. Bonawan issued a memorandum order that pertains to the lifting of, determined of the road sections under various deferred DPWH department orders for converting local roads to national roads. These roads are intended for implementation and subsequent integration into the Road and Bridge Information Application, or the RBIA. In line with the Department of Public Works and Highways Order Number 111, 120, and 127, Series of 2022, have attached copy of the list of various road sections in Zambanga Cibugay Province for converting the local road section to national roads. Thus, the committee therefore, with MPDO, find the request, ah, of the conversion of Ipi- Ipir Circumfer- Circumferential Road to National Road appropriate and proper. Mister Chair, I move for the adoption of this committee report number 229.
There's a motion for the adoption of said committee report. Seconded motion. Seconded by Honorable Palalon, discussion, any objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Mister Chair, I move for a, I move for a resolution, ah, approving the, ah, conversion of local roads section of Ipir Circumferential Road into National Road.
Second, Honorable Chair. This has been moved on Yudis seconded, Honorable Chong, discussion, amendments, objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Committee Report Number 230, Mister Chair, still on the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization. Subject is the request of Mrs. Liati Ferolino. A resolution interposing no objection to the FPA application over a parcel of land containing an area of 331 square meters situated at Puruk Pagasa Sanito, Ipir, Zambanga Cibugay. The remarks and recommendations, the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization to which was referred the above stated request, refer this matter to the Municipal Planning and Development Office for proper review and evaluation. After the evaluation of the committee and MPDO, the committee hereby recommends for passing resolution interposing no objection on the above request of Mrs. Liati Ferolino to, ah, the FPA application over a parcel of land containing an area of 331 square meters situated at Puruk Pagasa Sanito, Ipir, Zambanga Cibugay. I move for adoption of this committee report number 230, Mister Chair.
Seconded motion. Yudis seconded, Honorable Al-Hafid Muhammad, discussion, any amendments, objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Mister Chair, I move for, for a resolution, ah, interposing no objection of, to the FPA application over a parcel of land containing an area of 331 square meters of Mrs. Liati Ferolino at Puruk Pagasa Sanito, Ipir, Zambanga Cibugay.
Okay, seconded motion. Seconded by Honorable Dampalan, discussion, any amendments, objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Committee Report Number 231, still on the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization. Subject is the request of Alham Joe Hasim, the son of Abubakar Hashim Hasim. A resolution interposing no objection to the FPA application over a parcel of land containing an area of 9,152 square meters located at Puruk Uranus, Bangkerohan, Ipir, Zambanga Cibugay, Province. The Committee on Housing and Land Utilization to which was referred the above stated request, refer this matter to the Municipal Planning and Development Office for proper review and evaluation. After the evaluation of the committee and MPDO, the committee hereby recommends for passing resolution interposing no objection on the above request of Alham Joe Hasim, son of Abubakar Hashim Hasim, to the FPA application over a parcel of land containing an area of 9,152 square meters located at Puruk Uranus, Bangkerohan, Ipir, Zambanga Cibugay. Mister Chair, I move for the adoption of this committee report number 231.
Any seconded motion? Seconded by Honorable Palalon and Honorable Muhammad, discussion, any objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Mister Chair, I move for a resolution interposing no objection of the request of Mister Joe Al- Alham Joe Hasim, the son of Abubakar Hashim Hasim, ah, interposing no objection to the FPA application over a parcel of land containing an area of 9,152 square meters located at Puruk Uranus, Bangkerohan, this municipality.
Okay, any seconded motion? Seconded by Honorable Nueva, discussion, any amendments, objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Mister Chair, ah, Committee Report, Report Number 232, still on the Committee on Housing, Land, and Utilization. A, a subject is the letter from the Bureau of Fire Protection pertaining to the 1,000 square meters lot which the local government unit donated as site for Ipir Municipal Fire Station. The remarks and recommendations, the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization to which the above stated matter was referred for review. The titling of the said lot is on process to support the request for funding of a typical fire station, but however, the subdivision survey application was submitted on July 13, 2023, was disapproved by the Land Management Services of the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, Regional Office 9, due to the existing subdivision plan under PSD-09-034784. Therefore, the committee with MPDO hereby recommend for a resolution for the cancellation of previous approved- of previous approved subdivision plan under PSD zero-nine zero-three-four-seven-eight-four to pave way for the approval of new survey. Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this committee report number two-three-two.
Okay, there's a motion for the adoption of this said committee report. Seconded by Honorable Kiximil Palalo. Discussion? Any objection? Hearing another motion, see by proof.
Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution for the cancellation of previous approved subdivision plan under PSD dash zero-nine dash zero-three-four-seven-eight-four to pave way for the approval of new survey of the lot donated by the local government unit to the Epeel Municipal Fire Station.
Second, Honorable Chair.
This has been moved and duly seconded by Honorable Chong. Discussion? Any objection? Hearing another motion is here by proof.
That would be all, Mr. Chair, for the Committee on Land Use. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Catherine Toralba. I have my committee report.
We're still on committee report? Is there anybody else among the members of this honorable chamber who has committee report?
Honorable Seraphin Ramos.
I have one committee report. Honorable Ramos, de de floor.
Committee Report number two-thirty-three. Date December six, twenty-twenty-three. Subject: Hello, hello. Subject: Memorandum of Agreement between the Department of Agriculture, Philippine Center for Post-Harvest Development and Mechanization, represented herein by its director for Julius G. Albinja, PhD. Herein referred to as the filmmaker and the municipal local government of Epeel represented by its municipal mayor, Anamelsi Oligario. Herein referred to as the beneficiary. The Committee on Agriculture and Fisheries to which was referred, the subject caption and scene was reviewed. The content of the MOA as to its terms and conditions are found to be advantageous of the LGU. For being considered, the committee hereby move for the adoption of the said committee report. So move.
There's a motion for adoption of said committee report. Any seconded motion? Seconded by Honorable Mayga. Discussion? Any objection? Hearing another motion is here by proof.
I I move to pass a resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor, Anamelsi Oligario, to enter a memorandum of agreement MOA between the Department of Agriculture, Philippine Center for Post-Harvest Development and Mechanization represented herein by its director for Julius G. Albinja, PhD. Herein referred to as the filmmaker and the municipal local government of Epeel represented by its municipal mayor, Anamelsi Oligario. Herein referred to as the beneficiary. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any seconded motion? Second. Seconded by Honorable Alapid Muhammad. Discussion? Any objection?
For clarification, Mr. Chair, was the motion moved by the Honorable Ramos is for the authority? Was there already a motion passed to approve the content of the memorandum of agreement? Before giving authority to the local chief executive?
Then they move first for the approval of the content of the said MOA.
The motion, I don't know. I think we referred to the secretary with the
Okay, may we ask the secretary if what was the tenor of the said motion?
What is it, can?
Seconded by Honorable Muhammad.
To recap, Mr. Chair, with my simple understanding, the motion was the motion that was moved by the Honorable Ramos is for the adoption of the committee report. Then it was seconded. Then he proceeded to the motion for the authority.
Yes, yes.
Before the motion to give authority to the municipal mayor, it should be done first the motion for the approval of the content of the MOA before giving authority to the local chief executive.
Okay, Honorable Seraphin Ramos kindly move first for the approval of the content of the said MOA.
So I move for the approval of the content of the MOA as stated in the in the memorandum of agreement prepared by the Department of Agriculture region region nine.
Okay, any seconded motion for the approval of the content of the said MOA? Seconded by Honorable Dangpalan. Discussion? Any amendments, objection? Hearing another motion is here by proof. Okay, for the authority of the local chief executive?
So, I move to pass a resolution. I move to pass